Mayor, now I'm muted and we are live on YouTube.
Hello.
Hello there, good afternoon and welcome to this extraordinary meeting via Zoom on Wednesday, the 6th of May 2020. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome in the meeting with us today is our local MP, Matt Warman and Inspector Jacqueline Barnsley joining us. 2:30pm start and hopefully all the residents are logged on who want to watch and can see us. So the agenda item number one, minutes of the last meeting is attached, is to receive and consider or adopt otherwise the minutes of the meeting that the council held on Wednesday, the 4th of March 2020. We have those in front of you. It's page 64, 65, 66, 67 and 68.
Someone needs to indicate whether or not they're proposing those minutes.
Councillor Steve Kirk, please.
I'm happy to propose that we adopt the minutes, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Dan Kirk proposed. Councillor Carpenter.
I'm happy to second them, Mr Mayor.
Okay, all in favour? Councillor Box is in favour, all in favour? Councillor Kirk, Councillor Burnham.
Now, I think the idea of calling everybody out is going to be very difficult because to unmute, I can unmute, I've unmuted everybody at this moment in time, but to actually get around and mute them with the moving up and down the screen is making the job of administering it impossible. So I think using the hand show like that is the best way to do it and then if people can put their hands down afterwards.
Okay, if you could do that for me, please show your hands on the screen.
Is my hand up, Mr Mayor?
Yes, we'll count you in. It's not up at the moment, but we've got you.
Okay.
They will win this game. Artistic. Steve. Share.
You're unmuted, everybody else is muted again. Can I ask from the vote if everybody can take their hands down, please? Okay.
Okay, thank you. That was all approved. This technology, it's going to be hard to sort on the first meetings, but we will get used to it. We have had a couple of practices. But moving on then to agenda item number two is to know the apologies received by the town clerk prior to the meeting. Have we any apologies, town clerk?
We have apologies, Mayor, from councillors Blackburn and councillor Sutton.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, to receive declarations of interest. Do we have any declarations of interest? Councillor Barry.
Pressed the wrong one, sorry.
No, okay, we've got no declaration. Questions by email about an item on the published agenda to arrive at the info@skignesstowncouncil.org.uk, no later than noon on Tuesday, the 5th, 2020. These will be published within the minutes of this meeting. Have we any public participation, town clerk?
We had two. One was from Kevin Evans, who requested that the meeting time not be changed. We then had a similar request from Julie Sadler, but Julie Sadler was satisfied that the meeting would be broadcast on YouTube.
Okay. Thank you.
I think councillor Dennis has his hand up to speak.
Councillor Dennis, please.
Yeah, I need to declare an interest on the expenses thing that's coming up in a bit. All right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number five. Town mayor's announcements and correspondence, the details are available on the council website and Facebook. Due to unprecedented times, I have not been that busy, as you know, but I'd like to give this message that will go out on the social media sites and on our town council site as we speak. I think it might be on there already. This Friday, the 8th of May, the council was due to host a commemoration of the 75th anniversary of VE Day. Sadly, due to the current lockdown, we have had to cancel this. I do hope, however, that you will spend a few minutes on Friday to remember and celebrate those who gave their lives to overcome the horror of World War Two. Also take time to think of the people who lived through such adversities during those years but overcame it. We face a crisis again, a very different situation, requiring all of us, all of us to live in a way perhaps we couldn't have imagined just a few months ago. At a time when we long to be with family and friends, we may face financial uncertainty and when we're all desperate to know when this will all be over. We need to remember with certainty that better times are ahead. To you all I say, just the VE Day represented at the end of the long period of darkness, be sure that the people of Skegness will see good sunny times again and where we can all celebrate together. Until then, I'd like you to follow the government guidelines, stay at home, protect the NHS and save lives. And just before we move on to the next agenda item, we have some good news from the town clerk, if you would like to share it with us, please.
Yes, just shortly before the meeting today, the Royal Institute of Chartered Surveyors announced their awards for the East Midlands region. And so there are various categories and the Tower Gardens Pavilion was put forward in a category for leisure, which included leisure hotels, community centres and other such buildings. And I'm really proud to say that we've won that regional award for the leisure section. So we will be going forward into the national awards in London late in the autumn. But it's a really, it's a really great thing because if you think back a year, at this time last year, we were thinking about how we could improve Tower Gardens. There'd been the pavilion derelict for many, many years and now we have a brand new building. The gardens are looking wonderful, even though we're in these hard times. And I think the team and I think all of us can't wait to get residents and visitors back into the new pavilion and get it up and running. So we'll be putting out a press release later today. It probably might go out even before the end of this meeting. And so I'm really proud of this and I know the team are and I hope you as the council are as well.
He says the meeting is now streaming, streaming live on YouTube, Steve.
Oh, technical hitch. That's great news, great news to our town clerk and we are proud of the Tower Gardens. And it's proven that even in this lockdown where people have been taking their dogs for the walks and their daily exercise have really been, you know, talking the part of about the Tower Gardens, so I'm pleased with that and hopefully it will along continue. Okay, agenda item number six, schedule of payments and bank reconciliations for approval. Payments are attached.
Can I move the recommendations?
Thank you, councillor Anderson, thank you. Councillor Carpenter?
Yes, second that, Mr Mayor.
Okay, all in favour? Moving these recommendations? If I can actually, if I can just ask one quick question before we just clarify to the town clerk. It's just a payment, PPL PRS for £66.30. I think we might be in a position to be able to claim that back or carry that over. I think we might be able to do that.
We are in a position to carry it forward into next year, so we won't have to pay this again. We have notified them that the event's been cancelled and they have confirmed that we can carry that forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if you'd like to raise your hands, all in favour?
I'm in favour, by the way.
Yeah, we can see your hand mark. So councillor still to raise their hand on the screen. We've got a lot coming through.
I think that's everybody.
Okay, thank you. Number seven, we move on to agenda item number seven, reports by district and county councillors, none received. Just ask that everybody removes their hands off the screen, please. Now the voting is over. Agenda item number eight, the key councillor concerns of the impact of the COVID-19 in the local community. I think we've got two. Any questions on number eight? Councillor Pete Barry?
None at all.
Can you lower your hand then, please?
Sorry. I don't know where it is.
We've got a hand up on an iPhone, it just says iPhone.
On iPhone?
Oh, it's me.
Sorry?
Is it me, Mr Mayor?
Probably councillor Anderson.
Yeah, sorry.
It's fine.
Sorry about this, I tried to connect with my iPad, but it's not connected, so I had to go into my iPhone. I do.
The town clerks changed it for you, so we now got your name.
Thank you very much. Yeah, item eight, I did actually send a question in to our MP. Is this the item that you want me to raise or later on in the agenda?
Well, I think you can raise this, you can raise this because we're going to bring our local MPs with us, he's joined us today and we're thanking him for that. So if you want to, if you want to bring it in on this one, because it's all the impact of COVID-19 related, so we'll bring it in on this agenda item, please.
Do you want me to read it out?
Yes, please, because we've got an audience out there, we're live on YouTube.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, since the government put in new measures of payments of benefits for sick, disabled people and people claiming universal benefit after the February 28th, 2020, the Chancellor announced new payments for claimants because of COVID-19. There was an uplift of payments of £20 a week for new claimants, which was welcome. Since then, it has transpired that the sick and vulnerable people who are existing customers of DWP payments before the 28th of February were excluded from the increases announced by the government. The 2010 Equalities Act quite clearly states that no sick or disabled people should not be discriminated against either by the public or private sector because of their disability or sickness. This decision by the government not to pay or claim the same amounts is clearly discrimination against existing claimants, which is unlawful under the Equalities Act 2010. Can you please explain why this decision was made to exclude these claimants and create a two-tier system? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your question. If we could, our MP would like to reply on that, if he can.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank the town council for doing this. I think it's a great innovation. To answer the question, since it was submitted beforehand, I did have the chance to talk to the minister for this area, Will Quins. What he's told me is that the uplift applies to people who are on universal credit, it's not people who have started claiming since the crisis engulfed us, if it's anyone on universal credit. If you are on the old legacy benefits systems, of which ones we're trying to move away from, then rather than getting the £20 uplift, you get a 1.7% uplift and a housing benefit uplift. So there is no more discrimination than there is in the sense of we have a range of different benefit systems running in parallel. To be honest, what I would say is the person who got in touch should get in touch with me directly and we can make sure that they are getting everything that they are entitled to, because the way this stuff is administered does depend on whether you are on universal credit or whether you're on LHA or whatever. Overall, though, it's very important to say that obviously there is nothing in the benefit system that is legally able to discriminate in the way that's been described, either in the past or currently, and we wouldn't seek to do that. I think as councillor Anderson said, I think it's important to welcome the changes that have been made, but also to acknowledge that these have been done very quickly and there will inevitably be some teething trouble, so I'd be very keen for people to get in touch with me to make sure we can iron them out, but thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anderson, would like to come back in, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for the MP for replying to my question. He's replied only in one part, and that was universal credit or universal payments. I was referring to ESA payments, the employment supplementary allowance payments and also the statutory sick pay payments that the government announced that they were taking away to three days waiting and implemented from the start to £97 per week. Under the system, under ESA payments before the 28th of February, ESA payments were made at £73 per 10p per week. And now if you claimed ESA payments, because if you had COVID-19 symptoms after the 28th, you automatically went to £93, the same as statutory sick pay. Therefore, claimants before the 28th who were receiving ESA payments are being discriminated against. I have raised this matter with the Shadow Minister and I've had a reply from him.
Thank you. How MP, please?
Yeah, I mean, look, I think as has been said, if you are a new claimant fundamentally, you will be going on to universal credit. No one is going on to these old systems that are being phased out as a new customer, if you like. There will be people who are dealt with differently. There is no intention to discriminate in any way. It was, as we've been saying for the last five years, ideally everyone would be on universal credit and we can't move quickly enough. But I just go back to what I said before, I'm very keen to try and iron this stuff out, very keen for individuals to get in touch with me. I think you can see from the overall tone of the government's response, there is no intention to try and discriminate, there is every intention to try and make sure that every business can keep going where it possibly can and every individual can get access to the funds that they need. So I'm not going to get into disputing individual cases, but I would be very keen to see them come forward as quickly as possible to me individually.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for our local MP for that answer. And as you've heard, you can get in touch with him personally where he will help you on an individual basis, so thank you for that. We've got any other questions regarding agenda item number 18, if you'd like to raise your hand? Councillor Steve Kirk, please. Councillor Kirk?
I've just waited for the unmuted, isn't it? Yeah, just one thing and it's just to carry on from some work I've been doing elsewhere, particularly in relation to our residents. We know that we've got the bank holiday coming up, sadly, you know, our party in the park can't go ahead, but still we are forecast 20-degree temperatures, so there could be a huge temptation for people still to travel to the coast and in particular Skegness. So I just urge any councillors to try and make sure that message gets out there that whilst in normal times, we absolutely love people coming to the coast and our businesses benefit from that, sadly now isn't the time to do so. So for those who are maybe listening on YouTube or if the councillors can get this around their social networks further afield than Skegness, please, please stay away this bank holiday weekend. We are in a low COVID-19 area at the moment, let's keep it that way and let's all stay safe.
Thank you, councillor Kirk. Yes, just to clarify that, if you can pass the message about that Skegness is closed, you know, there's nowhere to park. We are closed for business at this moment in time. As soon as we are reopened again, we will let you know ASAP because, you know, we miss you just the same as you miss your walks on the coast. So are there any other questions on agenda item number eight? No? Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine, planning and policy committee minutes attached to receive and consider and adopt otherwise the resolutions within the minutes of the planning and planning policy committee meeting held on Wednesday, the 11th of March 2020. I'm quite happy to move those, do I have a second? Councillor Ty?
Yeah, I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, okay, if you'd just like to all raise your hands in agreement? Paul, please? If you've not raised your hand, could you please do so on your screen, please? Still some not showing.
And we should, I guess, do those against if there are those that are not raising?
Okay. Councillor Ty, he was in. It's gone through anyway, I think, hasn't it?
Yes, it's a majority then.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Technology at its best. Moving on then to agenda item number 10, the management committee meeting minutes attached to receive, consider and adopt otherwise the resolutions within the minutes of the management committee held on Wednesday, the 11th of March 2020. Those are attached. Councillor Danny Kirk, please.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to propose that we adopt the minutes as accurate, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item M65, five-year business plan. I haven't got an issue with the actual recording of the minutes, but I do see there is going to be resolved, the workshop is held in June to develop the plan and that comes from previous consultations that brought to the workshop and the report be noted. I have no concerns about that recommendation. What concerns me is the press release today regarding from East Swansea District Council working in partnership with, or closer working in partnership with Boston Borough Council, which could have clear issues for us as a town council on economic development and strategies. So I'm just wondering, could we involve that in the workshop?
Mayor, the agenda item is purely to deal with the minutes in hand, it's not to decide what goes forward to the actual workshop. I'm sure that's something that councillor Anderson can bring to the management committee when that's held or put forward suggestions to the workshop when that's created.
Okay, I'm happy with that.
Thank you, thank you councillor Anderson. So we've got a proposer, are you happy to second that then councillor Anderson?
Yeah.
Yeah, second it, all in favour, please, show? Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 11. Notes from the emergency advisory meeting are attached to approve and adopt the emergency decisions and actions taken by the town clerk during the initial COVID-19 crisis and reported to council at the 2nd of April 2020. Councillor Cunningham?
Oh, sorry, is my hand still up?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, mate.
Mr Mayor?
Councillor Kirk?
There's just like a problem with the system we need to iron out, inasmuch as I was trying to raise a point of order on the last item, only a minor thing, but councillor Anderson who seconded it wasn't actually at the meeting. So you need to say that second and that vote again, but I was trying to raise my hand, we were trying to vote at the same time, so it was a little bit awkward.
It's very difficult, this technology, all these blue hats flying in the air.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, so we have a proposer, can we have another second then, please? So you're happy to second that councillor Kirk?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Second it, so on the votes which we had, if you'd all like to revote on that one, just to clarify. We do apologise if you're watching this live on YouTube and it's new, a new system that we're trying to get our heads around and these are unprecedented times, so please bear with us. Just give it a second for the town clerk to get the information he requires.
Are there any against, Mayor? Because there's one, two, three, four, five, six councillors are not voting, so...
Oh yeah, we've got councillor Finley that isn't voting at the moment, Anderson, Barry, councillor Dennis and councillor Emston. Are you for or against?
So if everybody who's for lowers their hands and then we have the hand raising for...
Okay, so all lower your hands. Do we have any against?
No.
No, thank you. Okay, agenda item number 11, notes from the emergency advisory meeting, which is attached to approve and adopt the emergency decisions during the initial COVID crisis, the advisory meeting on the 7th of April 2020.
So just to remind everybody and for the benefit of the public mayor, there was a period of time before the legislation... there was a period of time before the legislation came in to allow councils to meet by video conferencing. It was a period of time where there was no decision making by council and therefore we had to find a way of those decisions being taken by myself during that period. So we did that by circulating emails, getting indications of people's views and those were circulated over several days. And then following that, I then made a decision based on those those consensus of email responses. This was then published and this is the document that's before you. So what we're doing now is to try and take that back into official council business so that it is endorsed by council and it doesn't just rest as being my decision.
Okay, thank you. Can we just, I've got just before bringing councillor Dan Kirk in, can we just make sure that you are muted because we're getting some background noise, please? Can you just make sure that your microphone is switched off? That'd be great and councillor Kirk then can speak freely without any feedback. Councillor Kirk?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'm happy to propose that we adopt the clerk's response under the emergency measures. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second for that? Councillor Jimmy Brooks?
Yes, I'm happy to second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favour, if you'd like to raise your hands on screen?
Something is just three councillors who haven't indicated.
Councillor Finley, councillor Anderson and councillor Emerson. Just waiting for your vote, please.
It may be again that we need to take a vote against if that's the case.
So if we've got all those hands up, if you'd like to remove your hands and we'll just check to see who's against, please.
Can you hear me there?
Councillor Claxton, yes, we can hear you.
Adrian, councillor Finley's having a bit of a problem with his system.
Okay.
He's using the PCs, not tablets, so he's having a bit of trouble getting his vote registered.
Okay. We'll put that one down as an abstain then, if you want to send this forward. But we can't actually hear him unless we unmute him, just to clarify that he is there.
Councillor Finley is now unmuted.
Councillor Finley? Yeah. Sorry, you're having technical issue. There you are. Sorry, I have technical issues, but are you for this or against?
Yeah, I'm for it. Can I just, thanks. Thank you councillor Claxton. I can't remember last week when we had the practice run, what did you have to press to show your hand? I can't remember what it was. There was two buttons to press, the one that.
Alt and V.
Oh, and what, sorry?
I think it might be Alt and V.
Alt and V. No, no.
We'll come back. We'll come back. If we have any more technical issues, we'll try and resolve these as we go along. We are new to this, so it is a learning curve.
I'll just keep putting my hand up then.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Councillor Cunningham has got his hand up.
And councillor Cunningham, would you like to speak? Are you, are you?
Please. Speak? Yeah. Are we on?
You are.
Yeah, can you just pass a message on to councillor Finley, please? It's Alt and Y, not Alt and V. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item number 12.
Right, Mayor. The paper that's before you is really a series of decisions for council to make during this difficult time. And there are a number of procedural issues which are different this year. So in normal times, we would be holding an annual meeting of council in May. And that meeting would be where a new chairman is or mayor is elected. And also as part of that process, we also re-adopt standing orders, appoint to committees and various other annual administrative tasks. The legislation has been changed to facilitate the continuation of existing procedures through until May the 7th, 2021. So not having to go through that annual meeting process. So that is one of the things for council to consider today, whether it wants to to take advantage of that legislation and not have to go through an annual meeting. As we see, it's not the easiest thing to do on, you know, for unpracticed council meetings to do that and the annual meeting, I think, will be quite a difficult one to achieve. There are also other regulatory things. The town council normally calls an annual meeting of parishioners. This is set out again in legislation. Now, I've been advised by the National Association of Local Councils that although there is no specific item in the new legislation to to enable councils to avoid this, given the current lockdown situation and that the annual parishioner meeting brings together lots of people. Now I could advise that there's no prospect of the council being challenged on this. And again, like many other parish and town councils up and down the country, many are just deciding not to hold this meeting this year. There will still, of course, be an annual report when the accounts are published. That will be put out on the council's website and through social media in the normal way. But there won't be, or I'm suggesting that there shouldn't be an annual town meeting this time. Then moving through the reports. Planning is usually a delegated function to the planning committee. With the current restrictions and the need to organize this type of meeting, my suggestion is that council allows both itself and the management committee to consider the consultation on planning applications. In this way, we can be assured of getting through those consultations, but making the best use of this type of meeting. As we know, from time to time, we get planning applications, just one or two coming through. And to try and set up a meeting such as this for that purpose will be quite difficult. So actually being able to tag it on to another meeting, I think, will be quite useful. There's then another question which was raised, has been raised by a couple of members of the public, which was a suggestion that we actually move the start time of meetings. As you know, they're normally seven o'clock for the public meeting and then 7:15 for the council meeting for ordinary meetings of council. The suggestion is that we actually move to a PM afternoon meeting. It was discussed at our trial meeting and some suggestions were made there and hence this meeting was called the 2:30. There are various issues. I think some councillors have, a couple of councillors have raised the issue that it might be difficult for those people who work during the daytime. Although we've actually got a very good turnout today. For the people at home who want to view it, what I would say is that if it's live or live on YouTube, YouTube is still there, so they can still watch it in the evening if they wish to. And we haven't currently got live participation within the meeting. And I think we're some way off the technical ability to be able to not only administer that, but actually be able to respond to that in a positive way. So there are various recommendations in the report. So the first is to just receive the report I've given, but also then to cancel the annual meeting and fall back on that emergency legislation. That would have the put into the situation that the current deputy mayor would then become mayor next year. And so on those who are in the list of people to be mayor, that would be pushed back for each of them by one year. That we also push forward all of the existing annual procedures such as committee representatives, committee responsibilities, delegated authorities, signatories. All of those will continue as they are until the 7th of May 2021. That we postpone the annual town meeting, so the residents' meeting until April or May 2021. That we, that we continue now to hold these meetings by video conferencing and that they're live streamed to the public via YouTube. That we cancel the remaining meetings now in May. That we allow planning applications to be considered at full council committee as well as planning meetings if necessary. So if the other meetings don't exist, then we can have that planning meeting to do that. And that we, that you consider temporary change of the default time for meetings to afternoons. But obviously for you to decide what that might be. So those are the recommendations before you.
Put councillor Cunningham and councillor Dennis on mute, please. Because the pictures keep disappearing when somebody makes a noise, that's all. And then thank you. We can bring councillor Anderson in, please.
From A to F?
Sorry councillor Anderson, I think we missed the first bit. Sorry, it was the town clerk. It's just a little bit of a delay before the microphones disappear. So if you'd like to start again, please.
I'd like to move the recommendation of 3.1 to A to F. G, I am concerned about the temporary changing of time. Although we agreed it in the previous meeting when we tried to set this up to try to get everybody together for this meeting. But I'm happy enough to support G to when the lockdown ends and then to look at it again. Because a lot of councillors may be going back to work, et cetera. And of course, if they go back to work, then obviously these kind of arrangements won't work in the afternoon. So I'm happy enough to go to or recommend from A to F. But G, I'm happy enough to consider temporarily changing default time for meetings to after this until the lockdown ends and then look at it, look at it again.
Of course, thank you. I would just like to say that that's all right because we all want to get back in the chamber when it's safe to do so, because we know that this technology is not going to enable us to go forward the way we want to go. So I appreciate that. Councillor Danny Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm also conscious that we do have councillors that are classified as key workers. And also there are many councillors present who are able to work at full capacity at home. There are individuals that have had to take time off work and utilize holiday for that. So just be mindful for the whole council to be aware of that. One way to mitigate that somewhat could be to have it a bit earlier than seven. I mean, if people are working from home, then it's quite reasonable to expect people are finishing at five, half past five. That might be more of a realistic time. But yeah, I'm quite agree with councillor Anderson, A to F. I wouldn't wish to support G unless the rest of the council were comfortable with being able to do that. We might be putting undue pressure on individuals that haven't disclosed what their current working arrangements are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dennis, please.
Yeah, councillors, in my view, I agree with Daniel Kirk, if I may say so, and with councillor Anderson. It's very difficult for me in an afternoon like this, you know, believe it or believe it not, we're quite busy at the moment. I'm quite comfortable to do this while the lockdown is in process. But I think when that's lifted, I think there are councillors who work to work. It's very inconvenient this time of day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Danny Brooks?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I agree with the last three speakers, councillor Dennis, Kirk and Anderson. The problem is the lockdown may not be fully lifted, so we may not be able to go back to the to the new pavilion. However, we may be at work. So in one way or another, so I totally agree. It's not a problem right now, but if on Sunday the Prime Minister announces that we can semi-open, then I could possibly be at work myself. So I do agree with the three speakers that we do need to all look at the times really. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Steve Kirk?
Yeah, initially councillor Anderson moved down to F with G separate. I'd like to leave that because I would be opposing G. I personally have got quite an important report to write and I'm working full-time still. So I've had to take time out of my working day to attend this meeting. It's a one-off, that's fine, no issues with that. On a monthly basis, I don't see any need. I think it's questionable about why you can't video conference in the evening. If everybody can stream their Netflix perfectly okay in the evening, they can use Zoom well in the evening as well. Excuse me, so I don't quite see that. So I'm more than happy to support as of down to F without an issue. But I'll certainly be opposing G. I would like us to return to an evening meeting. Even when we're doing virtual, an evening meeting would be preference for me.
Okay, thank you councillor Kirk. Would anybody else like to speak on this? Councillor Danny Brooks?
Yes, I'd like to second councillor Steve Kirk. I agree. I think, as he said, although we're off all day at the minute, some of us, some of us aren't. I think an evening meeting shouldn't be a problem. You're still sat at home doing it or wherever you are, but yeah, I would second that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That allowed me to come back. I hear what people have to say. But I have to tell people that, and we had this debate at the last meeting regarding internet connections. And I myself here, I've had to have a booster put in at quite a considerable expense. So because my signal is bad during the evenings especially, the internet just cuts out. So I don't really mind, okay, what time, okay, meetings are held. But I do agree, we need to trial something because I think during evening periods especially, when a lot of people are logging on using Netflix and streaming and games and God knows what else, okay, that we will lose some internet connection and we don't want that to happen. So I'm a bit cautious of excluding G on that issue because I think we could find ourselves digging a hole for ourselves in going to an evening meeting at this present time until we have announcements, as what councillor Brooks said, what the Prime Minister is going to say on Sunday. And then obviously we can review it then.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Mr Mayor, just to reassure councillor Anderson somewhat. There is a slight fluctuation of internet speed in the evening, probably only as much as about 5%. The issue is with our video conferencing software Zoom. However, there was a significantly reduced load in the evening. So we should probably actually see an increase in performance for Zoom particularly. That's from my experience of using it. With regards to councillor S Kirk. Um with regards to um councillor S Kirk um being opposed G, I'm I'm kind of glad that somebody did um propose that, so it's already been seconded, so that's the the clear favour. I could move it a bit earlier, but it's it's to the council really. Um for some people, they do still work full time, and for the odd meeting, it's fine, but for a a regular uh consistent diary, that could be detrimental to their businesses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kirk, Steve Kirk.
Yeah, just a very quick one, if councillor Anderson's having trouble with the internet, which is is quite sad, can I suggest he raises it with our MP, who I believe has quite a significant role to play when it comes to broadband and broadband speeds, and is here now, so councillor Anderson, give him a hammering. I mean, I mean, speak to him nicely, sorry.
Councillor Anderson raised his hand if he'd like to come back before we go further with this.
Yeah, I'll quickly come back, yeah. Okay, yeah, well, I could quite easily do in a public arena, but I won't, um because I think it's down to actually the broad width, broadband width uh allowed here. I mean, I I'm uh have my provider is, I'm not going to say, but it begins with an S, and they they quite clearly said that the capacity uh is huge at the moment, and without a booster, I wouldn't be able to connect in the evening periods, because uh my internet used to go on and off, and the streaming, which um I have in on my smart TVs, et cetera, just died. So um that's the reason I'm saying it. Uh if I'm having these problems, I'm more concerned about the general public if they can engage with us, and that's what 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 that's why we're doing what we're doing now.
Okay, thank you. Um I've been listening to everything that you've all said, I show your concerns, uh notefully, we'll know a little bit more when our Prime Minister has made his uh speech on Sunday, hopefully for some good news for us all, because everybody has been sitting at home uh tightly and trying to get around this uh awful thing that's happened to to the world, not just the country, and us as a nation. Um would anybody else like to to raise anything unless? No, I don't think so. So are we any clearer? Are we are we considering then that we leave three point one uh A to G in? Um yeah, I don't know where we're at with that one.
Mayor, I think the the there was a proposal regarding G, which was um well, regarding the proposals, A to F to approve as is, and I think the proposal was that G uh remain even during the video uh conferencing times at seven uh PM. That was the proposal, and I think that was seconded.
Okay, councillor Anderson, please.
A proposal which was seconded by uh councillor D Kirk. I mean, it doesn't matter to me, um because I'm retired now, what times the meeting are, I just want full engagement, and I don't want any hiccups. That's why I think on item G, if we wait, okay, till after what the Prime Minister announced is on Sunday, and hopefully it'd be good news, um my gut feeling is that, and what's been said, is that people won't be going out on the usual regime from nine to five. People will be going to work at different times during the day, allowed to work from different times of the day, which affects quite a lot of people like my wife um who work in offices, et cetera. So um we don't know what what's going to be said till Sunday. Can we come back to this question on item G um after the announcement on Sunday? That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ty, please.
Yeah, thank thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say exactly what councillor Anderson has just said. We you're talking about something that on Sunday is going to change everything. Let's wait until the decision is made of where we are, and then we could change item G to suit everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to come back at that town clerk, or?
Well, um clearly there 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 won't be another meeting prior to the the next meeting to make that decision, so um if we can make the decision in relation to the next meeting, and I think the proposal that's on the table is that 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 meeting should be at seven PM. Now, it may be that at that meeting, having taken account of what um is is going on at that time, if that decision could be changed again, it's not, it's not a permanent decision.
Okay, so where would we like to go with this? What would we like to do um for the next meeting, so we can have some clarification? Would we would we like to say late seven o'clock then, if this is going to be the way forward, um as we do ease lockdown? Um like you said, we we need we need some clarification for the next meeting. Um if it goes ahead at seven o'clock and we lose people on the internet connection, um then, you know, it we have got a problem, it'll highlight the problem. If it all goes ahead, uh well, um then 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 it should continue to normal as we come out of lockdown and get back into the chamber. Councillor Brooks, Jimmy Brooks.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think we should go ahead with um councillor Kirk's proposal, um and maybe put it back to, you know, seven o'clock as as suggested, and I think we can always change again if it doesn't work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ty. Oh, sorry, councillor, sorry, councillor Ty, yeah, sorry.
Yes, I was going to say, there is a proposal, there is a second, uh let's put it to the vote and move it to the seven o'clock if that's the wish.
Yes, I've got two more people wishing to speak, and I shall then go straight to the vote. Councillor Anderson, if you'd just like to come back quickly, please.
I will withdraw my proposal under G and support seven o'clock after the uh Prime Minister's announcement on Sunday, then we will have more clarification.
I think we can make the decisions, and thank you very much for that. Councillor Eddington, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think that we all know that there's going to be some this announcement, but I would, all the press speculation is that what's going to come out of it is going to be a phased relaxation. So I think that if we must assume there's going to be a a sudden collapse of the regulation, so to speak, and there's going to be a very gradual and subtle reintroduction to normality. So, I mean, I'm quite happy fit to return to an evening meeting, it doesn't have any particular impact on on myself, but I should go along with with the majority.
Okay, thank you. All the time, as we know, um there's information coming in live as we speak, that Germany are starting to allow people to go to other people's homes. There are things happening, and we have to think positive about this. Um we we're looking at the meeting for next month, we're going to cancel all, we're looking at to cancel all meetings in May and resume again hopefully in June. Um but I think getting the weekend out of the way, uh so we know where we are, because if it changes again, it only causes us problems again, and we're back to square one, going over the same old uh stuff time and time again. So um we've heard the proposals and the seconders, um.
Uh can I can I just intercede just a minute? Um you've mentioned there the June meetings. Um in June, there wasn't planned to be a full council meeting, but there is a councillors' training day. Uh can I suggest that we do reserve that for an extraordinary meeting, should we need to uh have a meeting in June? Um that would be my suggestion, that people just keep that in their diaries as a potential council meeting date.
Yes, we could, we could do that, certainly. As we said, we're 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 up against this, uh and we need to be fully aware that we might have to change things rapidly as as things change. Um it's it's new to everybody, we're learning this, so happy if they keep that in their diary for that date, um and then if we have to bring the extraordinary council meeting back, we can. Okay, so we know what we're voting for. Oh councillor Brooks, sorry, Danny Brooks.
Uh yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I just think that we need to go back to the seven o'clock time. Um at the end of the day, whatever uh the Prime Minister says on Sunday, if we're in further lockdown, seven o'clock doesn't matter, and if we're let out um of our cages, then seven o'clock doesn't matter either. So I think seven o'clock is where we need to be.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go to the vote, then you've got the proposal, uh and your second, uh councillor Dennis, uh are you wishing, is councillor Dennis wishing to speak, or we're just going to go?
Just want to vote, please.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to the vote then, so all raise your hands if you've got that. I do apologize if it seems that we're slow, but we're watching all these hands ping up, and the town clerk is doing his best to uh follow these.
I'd say I think it's unanimous.
Are we okay? Okay. Lost my agenda item now. Okay, moving on to agenda item number thirteen, notice of resignation of councillor Walker. Councillor Bob Walker, and what the next steps are.
The um re- the resignation has been reported to East Lindsay District Council as we are required to do. And um the advice that I'm being given from East Lindsay is that they will uh put up a notice of vacancy. That's likely to be in the next um few weeks. They're not in a rush to do it, and as you can imagine, they're they're a little bit hard pushed staff-wise at the moment. So um that will come out in due course. Once that comes out, there'll then be a period of time where the residents of Skegness can decide whether or not they want an election. Now, it takes ten, ten people to come forward and say that they do wish to have an election, and if that's the case, then a an election will be held, but it won't be held before next May. That's the current advice. Now, that could change, because the legislation um that came in to postpone elections until next May uh could be changed again, but that would be the position um in respect of this particular seat.
Okay, thank you. And the resignation of councillor Walker worked tirelessly uh to to enable us to have a V E day parade, so um but the circumstances have changed, um but I wish him all the best for the future, and I suppose he's watching today, hopefully. Uh okay, councillor Adrian Finley has got his hand up, would he like to speak?
No, I would bring the vote, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Uh councillor Emerson's still got his hand up, if you'd like to speak.
From earlier on, I think we're just on time delay a little bit here.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson. Councillor Anderson.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I was going to move to the vote and and um obviously take notes of the item thirteen.
Okay, thank you. I just think we have got a delay, thank you. Uh councillor Brooks, I'll just bring him in, because his hand's showing.
Yeah, I do, I was just going to say, uh thank you to Bob Walker for his uh his ex, his wealth of expertise and and all the hard work he did as his time as a councillor.
Thank you, yes. I think a lot of people would think that he worked and to see hard to achieve what we got there. Uh councillor Jimmy Brooks, please.
Ah yes, basically, I just echo what Billy said, basically, but also I've got another question. If it does go to um obviously trying to get somebody back on board, how much is that going to cost um the taxpayer?
The um the likelihood is that it will cost somewhere between um five and eight thousand pounds. Um it does depend on the individual wards, and I haven't got, we haven't got estimates for individual wards at the moment, we only had an estimate for the whole um the whole of Skegness. Now, it costs um about eleven and a half thousand pounds to run the um town council's portion of the whole of Skegness, but of course, there were some economies of scales, because it was run alongside the district council elections, uh and therefore some of the costs were shared. Um the ward in question, which is the Woodlands Ward, is a larger ward and therefore has more polling stations, so I would estimate that it would be um one of the higher ones to have a a a vote in. So it is going to be in that sort of region of five to um eight thousand pounds.
Thank you, town clerk. Just a a quick one, town clerk, uh obviously twenty twenty one we're talking about, uh we presume, would that not coincide with the county council elections as well? Would that that be held on the same day, do you think?
It is possible, it depends, it that's purely a decision for East Lindsay District Council, and also uh I'm not totally familiar with the electoral reg- um regulations uh that apply, but I I would guess that there needs a possibility that they could do that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Danny Brooks.
Uh thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh yes, I I'd just like to thank councillor Bob Walker for his uh service to the town. Um he's been, he's he's served the town, not just to the town council, he's served it uh the Chamber of Commerce and many of organizations. I do think Skegness will miss him, um uh as it would anybody that volunteers for the amount that Bob used to do, so it's a sad loss for Skegness, I think.
Totally agree, thank you. Okay, we've got the proposal by councillor Anderson, do we have a second? Councillor Steve Emerson.
Yeah, I uh totally agree with what we've just been said, and I'll uh be more than happy to second this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if you'd like to vote, that we approve this, uh move this on, please show your hands on the screen, please.
I think that's it.
Yeah, thank you. If you'd like to lower your hands again, so we can move on, thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, theft of cemetery equipment, uh which is is attached. Um it's unbelievable that that we're reading this in in such the times we're going through, I can't actually believe it myself, uh but we'll let the town clerk uh go through this, thank you.
Well, you you've got the report in front of you, um listed there the equipment that uh has um been stolen, it is with the um insurers now in terms of making a claim. Um I, as of today, I haven't had any further updates on the uh investigation or whether or not um um there have been any leads to find uh the equipment. Um so that's that's where we are, it's just an update report to formally report it to uh council.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Danny Brooks.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um I was just wondering if the police inspector has any uh update for us, um maybe if it's an ongoing investigation she can't do, but I was just wondering if she did have any whilst we've got her here.
Maybe, uh yeah, Inspector Jacqueline Barnsley isn't, I can't actually see her name on my screen, but if she's in the uh in the meeting, I would like to 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 respond to that, it'd be great.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm hoping you can hear me.
Afternoon.
Hi. Um yeah, in relation to the investigation, uh the officer in charge of that has said that she's conducted CCTV inquiries, unfortunately there's no coverage. Um we've done some A M P R checks, and they've revealed a negative result, unfortunately. At the minute, there are no leads as such, however, um with your agreement, if we put together a media appeal, having received a list of everything that was stolen, together with pictures, um then we could put that out to to obviously the media outlets available to us. Um and unfortunately, due to our shifts not crossing over, um I haven't managed to speak directly, so this is all sort of an email update, so forgive me if it's a little bit scant.
Okay, thank you. Any update is gratefully received, thank you. Councillor Clatston.
Yeah, just going forward, uh can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh just going forward with the um with the replacement of all this equipment, uh how is it going to be, uh how's how are we going to go about replacing it? Is this going to be like everything else, where um three quotes come in to council and we pick that way? Or is it just, is it just going to be replaced by office?
It, this type of equipment would be replaced, it's all under my delegated authority to uh order. I mean, as you can imagine, some of the um, some of the smaller pieces of equipment are um very small indeed, um in in terms of value. The the biggest ones there are probably the uh ride or mower, but this was a a a smaller ride or mower, and it may be that we don't actually replace that. Um there are some pedestrian mowers in there, uh and again, we would look at at with experience of using the mowers that we had, what is the best mower to uh replace them uh with? I think the key, the key ones will be, the the speed of replacement will be the strimmers, which uh. which the grass is growing very quickly at the moment. And we've got strimmers being used all around the town and in the tower gardens as well, so they're not available. But we will, what I would intend to do is to sit down with the foreman and produce an essential list to get those replaced quickly. And then we would look at the other pieces of equipment in light of the experience we had with the equipment that's on there. So for example, wood chipping, it might be sensible to look at maybe hiring that in the future so that we don't have to store it. There are those sorts of questions. So within this report, I was asking for, because these are on budgeted amounts, to spend up to, up to £5,000 to replace the urgent pieces of equipment. One piece there was the locally manufactured trailer. That's what they use to carry heavy pieces of equipment around the cemetery. It wasn't, it wasn't a trailer intended for use on the road, but I understand that the thieves did actually use that. And as a result, it was found, I think in Addlethorpe with the wheels having fallen off because they'd used it to, on the actual roads. And then I understand that there was a further theft, so they could then use another trailer to, to move on. We did recover the trailer, but, but it's not in a repairable state unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Speaker, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I share your disgust that people would come to our cemetery and steal the equipment that we use to maintain the graves of the dead of Skegness. I think it's absolutely disgraceful. But the reason for we can just speak now is my concern is, are we going to buy another £5,000 worth of equipment? And how are we going to securely store this? Because obviously, our opinion of secure isn't the same opinion that the thieves thought. If they were able to get in, I know they used some equipment to get in, but there are five grand's worth of nice shiny equipment they can take next time and tow rags do talk to each other. So if there's somewhere it's easy to get into, we've just announced publicly, there's no CCTV coverage in that area. So we've just said, right, come on, come on guys, somebody else have a go now. So I'm really concerned that if we just put it back in the same container with a new lock on it, then we're going to be in exactly the same place in another month or two's time.
Okay, thank you, councillor Kirk. Would your Town Clerk like to come back? Just, we ought to take the inspector up as well and if we've got any photographs, share them with the police force and get it widely out there because this equipment will appear somewhere one day for sale.
Responding to councillor Kirk's comments there, I completely agree that this does mean that the use of the store facilities at the cemetery, we're no longer going to be able to use that for items of value. There are still items that don't have any value that we can store there. They didn't, for example, take any of the, you know, coverings and things like that that we use when digging graves. So there are items that we can still store there. But as you will recall, a couple of council meetings ago, we talked about getting further space in, in one of, in units. Now, again, the lockdown slowed the whole of that process down in terms of getting access to those units. But I think that's where we're going to have to be looking at storing valuable equipment and also making sure that we've got access to improved security measures. And that's, that'll be something I'll be looking at. The, the other issue though, in doing that is that because we use that equipment at the cemetery, there's going to be an inbuilt inefficiency of having to take equipment from storage units to the cemetery. And that, if you, that's going to add probably between half an hour and an hour each side of the day to do that, because it means loading up, getting the, getting the truck down there, unloading and bringing that equipment into the cemetery to use. So it will have an impact on our efficiency and ultimately either the standard of service or the cost of those services.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Usually we have an agenda item specifically in relation to ask questions to our inspector. I don't really like jumping on, on agenda items, however, there is a perception of a significant increase in burglaries during this lockdown time. And I'd just like to know what the local constabulary are doing to ease the concerns of residents and also what success, if any, there has been in the recent crimes because it's, it's increased massively as the general perception.
Okay, thank you. If Inspector Barnes would like to come back at that one, if she could answer that one, I'd be grateful.
Yeah, Mr Clare, yeah, you're right, there has been an increase in burglaries. I've asked our analyst to compare the period between the lockdown to now to the same last year, and burglary is one of the only crimes that's actually increased. There was and has been trolls in an operation that we've conducted that has, yeah, really good positive result that's recently been out in the media of charge, well, received 13 charges in the end. So we're hoping that that will quell the spate of burglaries that we have seen recently.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Richard Cullington, please. Councillor Cullington.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I do totally agree with councillor Steve Kirk about us being live on here, streaming this, letting everybody know what's gone on, how it's gone on, and obviously not looking forward to being in the cemetery for storage again for these persons. But also councillor Claxton brought up a very good point about having a three quote system coming in. It's unprecedented times, local businesses need local money. I do think we need to see three quotes when purchasing this equipment from local companies. And there are a number of local companies in the area which could supply this sort of equipment. So I would totally endorse Claxton on that one.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sid Dennis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do think it's very, very unfortunate, as all councillors have said, that this has occurred just when it's occurred and it's a terrible thing really. I have issues with getting three prices. The only issues I've got with that is that I believe that, and I would concur with the Town Clerk, I think time is in essence here. Town Clerk, a question for you, are we insured, are we insured old for new? How does that work? I understand the problem with, it was in a shipping container down there, I understand there's no mains power, so there was no way that you could put CCTV etcetera, whatever. And I think, I think it does need moving away. We haven't, you know, we're just going to have to logistically put some kit together so we can move everything up and down. Now, I just wonder what the time span is for getting three prices? Although I think I'm led to believe that we don't have to get three prices because I believe it's all been delegated down to you, Town Clerk, to do this without that.
The, I can answer that. The financial regulations are quite clear on what requires three prices and also whether those are quotes, estimates or just a market comparison. We always try and get the best value for the town council, that's always, so we're always looking at what prices are available and we would often look at internet prices and things like that. The bigger pieces of machinery do tend to be purchased from local suppliers, but, but local suppliers doesn't necessarily mean Skegness, because some of these pieces of equipment are simply not available in Skegness. There are some suppliers in Wayne Fleet and in Horn Castle and other parts of the East Lindsay area. And those that require regular maintenance within the warranty period, we obviously, we tend to use those local suppliers because otherwise it's too difficult to get the equipment there and back to, to be maintained. Smaller pieces of equipment, I mean, things like fuel containers and that, you're talking about a few pounds, we wouldn't, the cost of us actually going out and getting three prices for those is more than the actual items cost us. So we have to be a bit sensible about the administrative overhead on those things. So we would look for the, for the grass cutting equipment, we are, as I say, we are going to look at, at what's required. Some of the pieces of equipment were older and therefore what we get for them won't probably cover the price of a new piece of equipment. Some of them were, were dating back to 2013 and so seven years old. They have been very well maintained, but as I say, they are older, so the insurance value on them will no doubt be, you know, lower than if it would have otherwise been. And again, there's a difference between whether the items are individually listed on the insurance as an item or whether they're just part of our general equipment. And that again, depends to a large extent on what the equipment is, what value is placed on it, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why we're working with the insurance company to actually work out what the value is and therefore what money we would be getting back. But I do emphasise that we never, we always are seeking best value for, for items. We don't just go out willy nilly and buy stuff. But we have to be, you know, we have to be careful about the amount of administrative overhead. If we went, for example, for formal quotations, that means posting it out for a period of time, having a formal process to, to receive those back in. And then if you don't get the required number, you have to decide whether you're going to go out again. And to be honest, local suppliers of, of, of mowers and that tend to be relatively few for the type of equipment, commercial equipment that we're using. It's not like going and buying a hand mower or a strimmer that you would use in your garden. These are professional pieces of equipment.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I totally agree with councillor Dennis regarding this. I think because of what the Town Clerk has explained, I think we're going to find it very difficult for local suppliers in Skegness to supply the equipment that we need. And therefore, we need to actually go outside Skegness and actually get the equipment. I'm just mindful also that the upkeep of the cemetery is paramount because there's a lot of people that are, have got plots there, families who have got plots and loved ones there. Although we're, we're in lockdown at the minute, people can actually go and visit the plot, their plots or their family's plots and their loved ones. And I don't want us to get in the position that we were a few years ago when we had bad press and it was all over the national press and, and local TVs about the upkeep of the cemetery. We've moved on from that. I agree with councillor Dennis, we need to go out and buy this equipment. I also would like to make a plea to the police, if the police are there. I think we just not got to, or the police have not just got to view this as Skegness Town Council's ownership, it is the public ownership. The town of people of Skegness, these items that have been stolen, have been stolen from the townspeople of Skegness because it was public money, rape payers' money in Skegness that bought these equipment in past and previous years and even years present time. So we've all been robbed. In regards to councillor Dan Kirk, I, along with many of my neighbours, have been burgled here on the Beacon Park estate. We're living in fear of crime. These opportunists, what we've been told by the, by the police, crime is a matter of importance to us because a lot of people, especially women, are frightened of what's been happening. Although it's died down now, although, but it could come up again. So I make the plea to the police, start patrolling in earnest around the areas because a lot of people are living in fear. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. Definitely. And it just reflects, if you've been looking out, people are worried about going out at night, leaving their homes or doing anything, putting their bins out. And again, it comes back, they are feared. I'm not getting into a debate about it, but street lighting is needed, but we're not going to go down that one today, it is not on the agenda. Can I bring councillor Claxton back in and then councillor Dennis?
Hello, if you can hear me, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Another question for the clerk. This, is this machinery being replaced immediately out of one of our reserves and being replaced once the insurance money comes through? Or are we waiting for the insurance money to, to get back before we replace this machinery?
The, as the papers say, what I'm asking for is a delegated authority to spend money that isn't budgeted. So initially, that would come from reserves until the insurance money comes back in. What, what we would do is, is make, as I said, make a list of the urgent equipment, purchase that in, then we will then wait until we've got the insurance money in to see what, what money has come in. And then I would come back and say to council, well, this is how much has been covered by the insurance, this is how much money we've got left. These are pieces of equipment that, that, you know, the maintenance going forward, we will still need. I mean, some of those are things like a health and safety issue, so we can't, we've got to supply face guards and ear defenders and those sorts of things. So we can't wait on those, those types of things, we've got to get them.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dennis.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Three things really. First of all, I don't think you can buy stuff by committee, it needs to be got done because otherwise the way the grass is growing now and the thing is speeding up, we're going to be in such a mess, it's going to be ridiculous. Also, I think price is not what it's all about. Three prices doesn't mean it's all about like for like and what you're buying. You can't just get three prices and take the cheapest price, you've got to look at what's like for like and get value for money. I think the Town Clerk and his staff would be experienced now to realise exactly what their equipment they want and I don't think it's council's job to do that. Thirdly, I'd like to thank the police very much, looking at the Skegness papers today, looks like they've had a one man mini crime wave. I would like to know what, what the sort of percentage is, not this time of the officer, but in, in future, what the percentage of, of, of the person that they caught, who did quite a number of burglaries, how that effect to spike? Because I remember the inspector coming before and telling us they got one particular man who'd done a single crime wave and it really spiked the crime and I would look at that. Apart from that, if we could move this, I would like to move this forward please and be looking for a second. Many thanks.
Okay, thank you, councillor Dennis. I show your concerns and hopefully the, we can get those figures from.
Sorry, Mayor, you moved up the list just as, as you, as you spoke and I muted you instead of councillor Dennis.
Okay, I fully understand where councillor Dennis is coming from. We need to get the, the percentages from the police at some, some stage, not right at this moment in time, because we do have to, to move forward and we've got other things to worry about. But because if we don't get, we urge to the public to get the, to get all these phone calls in when, when crimes are happening or on things that shouldn't be happening on your street or certain behaviour, need reporting to get crime numbers. If we don't get crime numbers, if, if the figures don't start showing that there's an increase, we know what's going to happen. The police are going to get their funding cut and we just slide further down the scale and we, and we get into a worse situation than we are. So just to clarify that we need to get out to the public, however we get it out there, that they must report these crimes every time. It's the only way forward. Can I bring councillor Steve Kirk in, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, echo things you just said there, it's not reported, the police don't know it's happened, so we need to get that done. But yeah, more than happy to second recommendation, 3.1 A B, as written.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson.
I was, I was going to, thank you, Mr Mayor, I was going to second councillor Dennis. But just on, on one issue, yes, the police have arrested one person, but they, the picture has been shown of that person. But a lot of the crime that has been caught on CCTV by my neighbours and friends that I live, that have, have these crimes vested upon them, it isn't that person that has been arrested. So there's other people out there have been doing it. So I echo your sentiments, Mr Mayor, we need to record these crimes and we need the police to act.
Okay, thank you. Just before I ask the inspector to come back in, I'll just bring councillor Ty in and then we'll just see if the inspector has got a few more words for us. And then we'll just see if the inspector has got a few more words for us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to say there's been a lot of crime up the Seacraft area over the last couple of months, a lot of crime, a lot of break-ins. What's happening about that? Or is this one guy who's been doing it?
Okay, thank you. Maybe the inspector would just like to come back if she would. We know we're putting them on the spot, but we're all put on the spot on a daily basis and we'd like some answers too.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr Mayor. Obviously, I can't comment. I'm now conscious that we are live streaming, so I'm not able to comment on, you know, specific incidents or cases as such. I will take away the comment about Seacraft and look into that. But as I say, because of the judicial process, I can't comment on live ongoing cases. If it's in the media, then obviously that's a different story. So the picture has been released. And I'll certainly look into councillor's question.
Okay, just quickly, coming back because what was floating around social media, I think the concerns of the residents, for instance, last week, and it's probably not anything that you can answer. But the problem, the crime rates was happening, people shown on video trying to enter people's properties. And then the next afternoon on Borough Road in Skegness, prime example, people phoning in and moaning that there was a speed gun there. You've just got to be mindful that the police is not dragged in a different direction because we're concentrating on the crime and it's like, people are saying to us, the police don't care about the crime. What would you say to that?
We absolutely do care about the crime. We are getting a massive amount of complaints in relation to speeding. So we have to balance, you know, the needs of all our communities and the concerns of all the residents. You know, whereas potentially, I don't know, a person who hasn't been a victim of a burglary, but they're getting speeding in their street, that's obviously their main concern. So we have to be mindful of everyone's demands on us really and try and find that balance.
Okay, thank you. I just asked you the question really just to get the answer out to the general public while we're on here having the meeting. So thank you for your help. Okay, we've got a, it's been proposed and moved, proposed and seconded, nobody else wishing to speak. So all in favour, can you please show your hands? Press your raised hands button, please. I think they're all in town clerk.
That's it, unanimous.
Thank you. If you can all put your hands back down, that'd be great. Okay, moving on then to agenda item number 15, to receive an update on the progress with council accounts and the impact assessment on the council finances resulting from the coronavirus lockdown and to agree a position into relating managing debts, the report to follow.
Okay, well, you will have received the report and got that and had an opportunity to look at that. I mean, essentially, just as a little bit of background for Skegness residents, the town council now has 21% of its budget funded outside of the precept. So that's what we've done is what we've been required to do, which is to move away from reliance on public funding. And 21% of our budget is now funded by fees and charges and other income. The virus situation has had, or will have an impact on that income during 2020-21. In the same way that it will affect other businesses, you know, in the country and in particular in Skegness. So some of our bigger areas of loss of income, if you take, for instance, just car parking, we would be expecting to have quite an income from the Scarper Avenue car park at the moment. And we've got zero coming in at the moment. So that gives you a sort of an indication, over the year, we would expect to get somewhere between 25,000 and 26,000 pounds, something like that. And the rate of the income is currently pretty much zero. Similarly, we've now got units that we let out, kiosks that we let out. And they would normally provide quite a healthy rent, which comes into the council. Those businesses are unable to open at the moment. The invoices for rent go out on a regular basis throughout the trading season. We've already got some indication that some of them, like many other businesses in Skegness, will be struggling to pay that. We're currently following the guidelines in terms of not taking action to pursue those rents and recognising the fact that people are struggling. But we've got other areas as well. So we've seen that interest rates have dropped. So our interest on investments has come down for the coming year. A lot of the rents are coming in a bit more slowly than would normally be the case. Even in the cemetery situation, we normally have quite a lot of morials being put on at this time of year. But obviously people have been very cautious financially, so we haven't got an income coming in from that either. So I estimate towards during this year that we could, you know, have many tens of thousands of pounds of income, which isn't there at the end of the year or at very least is slow coming in. So you'll see from the report, I said 80,000 to 100,000 pounds is likely to be very highly vulnerable. Now, as you'll remember from the accounts from last year, we talked about the level of general reserve. And historically, the council has kept a low level of general reserve. We typically keep two to three months' worth of expenditure. And if we lose 80,000 pounds out of that, then that's a significant chunk of that reserve going forward. And it will mean that we'll have to be very careful next year to try and build that reserve back up. Because otherwise we wouldn't be able to withstand another crisis if there was one. So that's going to be something during budget time for the council to consider. Looking at last year's accounts, so 2019-20, we're working about three or four weeks behind where I would expect to be at this time. That's because the lockdown has had an impact on our ability to carry out our normal administration. Some of us are working at home, some in the office, and we're trying obviously to maintain that. But it also occurred just at a time when we were partway through an office move from the town hall to the new building. And that's left us in a disrupted state in terms of all our files and even our IT is not fully functioning as yet. But I am able to say today, I've got the preliminary figures from the 2019-20 accounts. And those look to be pretty much bang on track where we thought we would be. And I am able to confirm that we were able to put about 20,000 pounds into the general reserve at the end of last year. So even though we agreed through the year that things could be extra expenditure could be made out of reserves if we couldn't find savings elsewhere. And there are some areas where we've managed to get some savings. And therefore we were able to put that 20,000 pounds extra into the reserve. So at the end of March, the reserve figure will be around about 131,000. But as you can see, if we lose 100,000 pounds of that, that would only leave us with 30,000 pounds going forward. So that would be quite difficult to manage next year. I guess the big decision for council today is really regarding those people who rent from. We need to have a rent policy because currently it falls due, the invoice, it falls due. And they pay us within a given amount of time in accordance with their lease. I know that some other authorities, including the district authority, have taken the view that that it's impossible to chase people for rent when they're not actually able to operate in business. And it's really getting a stare from council today as to how you want me to manage that rent situation. So the suggestions coming forward are that we don't actively pursue. We encourage people to pay, you know, when they can obviously, but we don't actively pursue them until they've actually started to trade. And then we have in place a payment profile that would go through to try and clear their back rent by the end of the financial year, so by the end of 31st of March 2021. So that was, that would seem to fit in line with what other authorities are doing. And it would mean it would be sensible in terms of, from a cash flow point of view, we have got enough money to get through this year. We will be fine for this year. There's enough money in the bank to pay all our bills and get through. That's not an issue. And interest rates are very low, so not getting the money in is not impacting or going to impact that much on our revenue. As I said at the beginning, interest rates have fallen very recently. And that has had more of an impact than delaying getting the rents in. So I think that's the crux of the debate is around that rent rent issue and whether or not you allow the kiosks to delay paying.
Thank you. Just before I bring anybody in, town clerk, I'd just like to comment on this. I think we need to be mindful. You know, businesses are struggling, they're not open, and they are at the art of Skegness on trading and keeping our foreshore alive. So it's a must that we help these people. I will be recommending, after we bring people, I will be recommending that we move this and agree a payment term set out when they get trading again. Write to the businesses, tell them that we understand their difficulties and sympathise with them and set a plan in place on a way forward. I know that the questions are going to be raised. Well, they've had the business grant, some will be eligible for grants. However, they need that to survive now and to get open again. So I think, you know, the way we can help them is by easing them back into a way of a new norm. So they keep saying whatever that's going to be. But I think we really must support these businesses and help them in any way we can because we don't want to see four kiosks on the foreshore. Yes, there's rents to pay, but you know, let's give them time to pay. You've explained that we have a window, so you know, I would be looking to recommend, we'll be moving this and hopefully get the support of colleagues. councillor Emerson.
Yeah, just thank you, Mayor. Just one thing on this. I think it's a great idea what has just been said by the town clerk. People are struggling and they're going to struggle for quite some time. How long has this day been able to pay the money back that's outstanding?
Sorry, I didn't quite get that question myself. I had to think there was some interference, but maybe the town clerk picked that up.
I think the question was around how long they would get to pay back what was outstanding. I think the issue for council then is to look at not starting to chase until they're trading. But to then at that point, putting a place a payment plan through to the 31st of March 2021 to encourage them to have repaid the outstanding rent by that time, so by the end of the financial year. If they haven't paid it by that time, then they're going to be in a situation where they're going to be faced with new rent charges. And it's going to become increasingly difficult for them to catch up.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. councillor Danny Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a slight issue with that fixed date of the 31st of March and I appreciate why you've done that for the tax year. However, our businesses don't know when they're going to be able to start trading. That is a variable. I would like to suggest a rolling date. So if they are able to say open, I don't know, hypothetically in September, then there's a fixed amount of time for them to be able to settle any outstanding balance. Because hypothetically, there's nothing to suggest that they might not be able to trade at all this season and therefore not be able to open in, say, you know, Easter of next year, which wouldn't leave them very long at all to be able to pay their debts. Would be one point I'd like to raise and maybe, yeah, I think I'll even propose that. My second question is to Mr Warman actually. Now, obviously, there are going to be, you know, many, many, many local authorities and parish councils, just like ourselves. The government have announced significant packages for individuals. Hopefully, the self-employed is due to start in the 16th of this month, I believe the date is. He will hopefully correct if I'm wrong there. But us as a council are tens of thousands of pounds, if not more, out of pocket residents are physically out of pocket. It would be unfair for the rape pair to then pay an additional precept as a consequence when the government have assisted others. Furloughing is not an option for local authority and I understand why and it makes perfect sense. You know, it's public money already, so why furlough the public money? I get it. But we have a significant challenge for this. I'd like a little bit of insight from Mr Warman if possible, what the government are going to do and what that's going to look like to help local authorities like ourselves. So my first point, just to reiterate, I'd like to propose a variable date for when that's chased up to be decided by council, whether that's a 12-month or 18-month point of when they're able to start trading again. As opposed to a fixed date, because I believe that might be a tad unfair. And then that second question to Mr Warman, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And once again, I thank our MP, Matt Warman, for joining us this afternoon. Hopefully you can come back and answer your questions, councillor Kirk.
Yeah, thank you. They're both interesting questions. I would, for what it's worth, support the suggestion of there being a bit of flexibility in this because it seems obvious that we don't yet know how long things will persist in what form. I'd say a couple of things in response to where does this leave local authorities. It's right to say that there have been large amounts of money given to district councils and county councils and borough councils as well. But not anything like that thought given to parish councils and town councils. The thinking on some levels is that, for instance, the rent that you might be due from some tenants is actually something that government schemes will be covering in other ways. So the intention is not to doubly subsidise, if you see what I mean. It seems to me that it wouldn't be right if a business takes out a loan to cover expected costs. It shouldn't then also be let off those costs, if you see what I mean, in the same way that students are still going to receive money that they would normally receive to pay rent, then we shouldn't be double subsidising that sort of thing either. That said, there is a new discretionary scheme for borough councils and district councils that will go on top of the sort of schemes where individual councillors have been given small pots of money to provide subsidies in the right sort of targeted way. So councillor Kirk is absolutely right that there does need to be some further government thought given to how do we tie up some of the pressures that are going to fall specifically on the bottom tier of local government in a unique and different way. But I think we shouldn't do that in a way that discounts the fact that, as I say, for instance, some businesses are going to be in a position to take advantage of other schemes that mean that it is perfectly possible for legitimate debts to be paid. So I think we've got to get a balance right on that. All of that, I think, is a way of saying that I sort of end where I started. It is a bit premature to say we know what this will look like in the end. And therefore, as much flexibility as possible seems to me like it's the sensible way forward. Which is why you've seen lots of other local authorities, for instance, saying, okay, we will put a much more generous deadline on some accounts and we will take some more decisions a bit later on. I do think, however, there is also one really important thing to say here, which is that, yes, there are lots of reasons why people in Skegness and on the coast will be. yes, there are lots of reasons why people in Skegness along the coast will be worried. I absolutely understand that, and that's why the government is working really hard to get money to the right people at the right places. I do think, however, we should also be incredibly optimistic about the prospects for domestic tourism. We know there are going to be very few people getting on planes in a way that they used to. We need to, I think, be not just looking at how can we help businesses through this period, but also how can we help businesses that do rely on tourism to get the absolute most out of the economy as it starts to ease back towards normality. Things like the Towns Fund that I think will be hugely helpful on that. So very keen to try and make sure we get both the tackling of the negatives right, but also that we seize those opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick clarification, just reading through these, Town Clerk. There's a couple, I actually have a kiosk on the seafront that I rent. Do I need to declare an interest in this, even though it's a different authority? But would I need to declare an interest and probably councillor Brooks and anybody else?
I think, obviously, I'm not allowed to advise you on your declarations. What I would say is, will you directly benefit or any of your close family directly benefit from the decision that the town council makes? If the answer to that is no, then you probably don't have an interest to declare. If you feel that you do or will benefit from the decision that the town council makes, then you clearly have got an interest to declare.
No, on mentioning these rents on the kiosks that we run as a council, then there's only the businesses and the residents of Skegness to benefit and not myself. So that answered the question. Thank you. These things come to light as we go through, as we're watching screens. Councillor Anderson, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the spirit of partnership and across the floor, I agree with our MP Matt Warman in some of his statements regarding payments. We've got to be mindful, as what he said, this is all public money and it has to be repaid. The government doesn't have any money of its own. It's what it takes from the rest of us, and that's the general populace of this country. And obviously, what it takes and borrowing requirements at the moment, it has to be paid back. With reference to councillor Dan Kirk, I agree with him that there needs to be a payment plan put into effect, okay, to help businesses. But I'm not just looking at the businesses, I'm looking at the employees as well, who actually work for those businesses. Because what's been muted is that the Chancellor's going to start relaxing furloughing quite soon. Although I am concerned if he does relax it quite soon, the effect on Skegness employees will be immense because a lot of the businesses will be the last to open up in Skegness. So that has to be borne fruit by our MP when he's voting this through in the House. If there's a relaxation in July is what's been muted in the press. The second issue is that perhaps, and this is a question to our town clerk, VAT has been relaxed in businesses. Is the relaxation for us as a council in effect for VAT as what the government has done for businesses? These are businesses that has an income generating for us, for the benefit of our townspeople. That's all of us, not just the council, but all of us. And also, what the MP has said, Matt Warman has said about extra resources to be given to county council and obviously district council, I want to make sure that that money we get from the preset from East Lindsay District Council is ring fenced and they don't get their hands on money that should be given to us as a town council. Because at the end of the day, I don't want to see increases above inflation to our residents to protect our reserves. That's where I'm coming from. As what's been suggested, we have a lot of older and vulnerable and low-paid people working in Skegness or retired who've had their savings wiped out. They're living on the breadline at this present time. And I do not want to see, nor can I vote for huge increases in council tax to cover the losses. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the town clerk like to comment on that?
Yes, in terms of the VAT element, that's really a measure that's been put in place to assist with cash flows so that if businesses are unable to pay over their VAT in the usual way, they've got a bit more time to do that. It's not an issue such, as I said, cash flow this year is not an issue for us. And since the VAT would, unless there's changes to rates and things like that, the VAT, paying the VAT over now is not really an issue for us if we're going to have to pay it anyway. So I don't think that's a particular issue. Picking up on one of the points that councillor Anderson made, as we've seen before in this area, when lots of people go on to benefits, that has an impact on the council tax base. And therefore, just standing still can mean that there's a considerable rise in council tax on the precept in terms of the percentage, without actually having put council tax up at all. Because as more people come into benefits, it has the effect of lowering the council tax base. Previously, there were grants in place to assist with a transition between the old system and the new system whereby the benefits were taken into account. But those were gradually phased out by East Lindsay District Council. I know in some areas in the country, they are still providing supporting grants in order to effectively offset some of the impact of that reduction in tax base. Now, my concern would be that Skegness, as councillor Anderson has said, could be faced with a higher unemployment than usual, especially if businesses can't get back to work quickly. And that in turn could have an impact on next year's tax base as more people claim benefits.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dennis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I am concerned about with these kiosks, really concerned, is they're not taking a penny, these guys. And if they don't get open or people are social distancing and they don't get the money, I have some doubts whether they're going to be there at all at the end of it. And this is what we must do to protect our businesses. In some ways, we're going to have to make sure that they're there. And if we don't support these people, because to be fair, it's not their fault. They're paying a rent for something that they can't use. It's not their fault. It's part of the situation of where they are. And I do believe we're going to have to look at having to give them a holiday. And when I say a holiday, I think we're going to have to write some of it off because otherwise they could just be playing catch-up and they just won't be there. That's the wonderful thing about the furlough, you know, I've sixty-three guys, of which fifty-three, I've got furloughed at the moment. I've brought two or three back. I'm going to bring another four back possibly on Monday and then possibly, as we gradually open up. Now, the furlough thing has been a wonderful thing. It's helped us survive. It's like the grants. If you get a grant, say, for twenty-five thousand pounds, do you know, does that go on a rent? Or does that just keep you going? And as Matt said, you can't keep giving it. You know, the public purse is not a bottomless pit. But I can't, it's just a very, very delicate line to draw with these people, these kiosks, because they're not taking a penny. You know, Mark, you're not taking a penny. You've got a pub, you're not taking a penny. Danny, you're not taking a penny. And when we talk about setting out a payment plan, you've got to have a payment plan with some money. If there's no money, it doesn't matter how fancy your plan is, if you're not making any money, they're not going to be able to pay. It's very similar. I'm chairman of the bid and, you know, we've deferred the bid levy to six months. You know, we've looked into this and let's government change that. I'm stuck with that. I can defer it, but I cannot stop charging it because that's not down to the bid board. That's down to government or down to the local authority. I'm not quite sure which. We're still looking at that now. So a question I would ask for the town clerk, town clerk, how do we stand with these people who've got these kiosks? Are we factored in so they're going to have to pay? Or can we talk to them and can we come to an agreement to see these businesses get through it? So they're going to be there to then, when we do come back, there to be a business? And that's what the government have done with the furlough scheme. It's been brilliant because, you know, and the banks have been good, in my view, anyway, you know, they've been helpful and they give us headroom to make sure we can work. Because, you know, I'm knocking out thousands and thousands of pounds a week, you know, on furlough. And I would just like some guidance. What sort of legal position, Town Clerk? Are we in to help these people, if anything? Thank you. Sorry to go on.
I think we're in strange and uncharted waters. I mean, normally, the council has a duty to collect all monies that are due to it. That's a sort of fundamental principle. However, in the case, as you've mentioned, if by drawing together and forcing payment, that effectively forces them out of business, then we've got no income in any case. So the total budget for income budget for all of the kiosks is just over fifty thousand pounds. And I've factored that into that eighty to a hundred thousand pounds, which is likely to be highly vulnerable. So what I'm saying there is that, you know, I have doubts over whether we will get eighty to a hundred thousand pounds of the income that we would normally expect to get. Now, if that's the case, we can survive this financial year, but it does mean that in reserve terms, our reserves, our general reserve will be a lot, lot lower. And we would very much struggle to survive if we had another incident such as this next year. So we do need to get money in where we can, but I absolutely understand and the point being made, which is if in collecting the money, we put businesses out of money, out of business, then we won't have that income in any case. And we would then have further costs in trying to relet those kiosks and all of the legal procedures that goes around that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I come back?
Yes, you can, councillor. I saw your hand come back while we're on this subject.
Yeah, thank you very much, Town Clerk.
Steve, the town clerk, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Looking at something else and listening, sorry.
Yeah, Town Clerk, yeah, I understand that. I just think the main thrust of what I'm actually trying to say is that we need to talk to people and we need to arrange and we need to cajole and we need to, there's a word I'm looking for. We need to reach a balance with everybody to try to make sure it works for everybody. Because, you know, to have a kiosk with nobody to rent it is no problem. I'd be interested in what some of the other business people, Danny and you yourself, Mr. Mayor, and Dan and Steve, just some of the people who run businesses, if you can care where I'm coming. You just need to talk to people. You need to talk to people because without that, it's going to go to nothing.
Yes, you are. I think we need to, as business people, we need to also talk to everybody who supplies us, deals with us. They all know, they say we're in the same boat. Well, we're not all in the same boat. That's not true because some of the high streets have been suffering for years. However, locally is the concern. And hopefully, after Sunday, after our MP, Prime Minister has done his speech, hopefully, we're a little bit clearer on a way forward. Now, I'd like to be positive, and I want us all to be positive, that things will start to get back, maybe to a new norm, as they say. But things will start returning. It is happening. If you watch the news every day, in areas that they've struggled just the same as us, they're now starting to leave. And it unfolds day by day as new information comes out. So I would like to speak positively on this and say, look, we will be able to get back and running. At what extent, I don't know. But you're right, councillor Dennis, we need to talk. Those people need to talk to us and we need to reply and be mindful of that. And I'm going to bring some more councillors in now to speak on this. But we've all got our concerns, but, you know, if we can get through this, Skegness will bounce back. It will be good. But we just need to communicate with each other and help each other and all draw together at this hard time.
Yeah, here, here.
You know, I understand exactly where you're coming from. Councillor Brooke, Danny Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, regarding the, obviously, the kiosks. I believe the district council's view so far has been that they're not chasing any of the rents until the tenants get back open. And then they're going to strike up a personal agreement with them on how to pay the rents. I mean, that's all well and good, should we get open in the next few weeks. But if any kiosk, any business in Skegness is getting open in Skegness, they are going to struggle to pay the rent that is owed rather than any arrangement. Because, as we know, sometimes you get to October and you may as well shut the door. So I do think we have got to be mindful. I think possibly the district council, when I spoke to them about it, it was at very early stages and what they said was, we'll see how long it goes. No one's been, there's been no rent holiday, and that includes the donkey pitchers, who are actually just renting to be able to stand on there. None of their rents has been holidayed. It's being deferred until they start operating again. And then the council will negotiate an agreement with them. And what that agreement will be, I would say, will depend on when they actually get open. So I quite agree with councillor Dennis. At the minute, we're not taking a penny. When the Prime Minister releases restrictions, will he really, you know, the social distancing? It could still have detrimental effects to any business in Skegness, pubs, restaurants. They still may not be able to trade fully. They still may not need all the staff in. And they still may not take the amount of money they need just to pay the overhead. So I think we've got to be very, very careful on what we do, otherwise we will put people out of business. It is, at the minute, if we could get open in the next few weeks, I don't see, I see problems, but not major problems. If we don't get open till September, I see major problems.
Of course, they have all concerns that we share. And just on a personal note, as a district councillor, I have exchanged some emails going forward because I've been asking economic growth, Tim Leader, and I've exchanged a couple of emails because I think as a council, a local council and even as a district, we should be looking at, when we do get open and things start easing and lifting, we should look away of extending our season well into the new year and just let everybody celebrate and say goodbye twenty twenty because they're never going to go through this in our lifetime. It's not going to happen again. Well, hopefully not. But I think we just need to look forward and look at ways of how we all adapt. Maybe extending the season would be the answer. I don't know. That's for another time. But that would be my view, and that's what I would be pushing for, for an extension up the east coast and other resorts I'm sure would want to do the same. So thank you for your input. Councillor Edgerton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that listening to the debate thus far, it's clear that everybody is really concerned about the situation. For myself, I find the whole picture quite depressing, really, insofar as the government spokesman, they make the usual noises at the daily briefing. But I sometimes think, do they really understand the impact of the policy which they've brought in in order to combat Covid nineteen? Speaking of areas like this, I think I'm quite heartened by what people have been saying so far, that we need to pull together. We've certainly got to support our local businesses because if we don't, we could get past the point of no return and that would be an absolute tragedy for this area. We've got so much things going for us, but a lot of what's currently taking place is out of our hands. So I do hope our parliamentarians take this on board. What I do find depressing is that they're talking about the hospitality trade, which we know is a major, major player in this area. It's put down the field insofar as returning to some form of normality. I think we need to try and bring this farther up, up the pecking order, so to speak, because quite clearly, we've got to get to grips with this for the long-term future of this town. And I would support what councillor Dan Kirk said in respect of the arrangement with the chaos. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Edgerton. Councillor Steve Kirk, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's quite a tricky one, three points, too, is, yeah. We need to remember that trade down our bit of coast supports eight thousand full-time jobs. There's eight thousand people that were employed by those kiosks, those restaurants. There's eight thousand people that were employed by those kiosks, those restaurants, those bars. The last thing we want to be doing is making those unemployed. It's the last thing we want to do. And as a town council, I actually think that we should be the beacon of how we deal with our other businesses. I know exactly what these leaders have done and I know they made that announcement early doors. Uh, maybe if we're making their arrangement with their kiosks now, we take a slightly different tack. And I think we should take a different tack. I don't think we can leave it totally open-ended. So I would suggest that they need to have a payment plan in place, agreed with us by the thirty first of December. Because that way they'll know if they've done any trade at all. But I would not expect to be recurring that money this financial year. Because as councillor Danny Brooks said, even if they get open end of September, October time, the amount of money they can take may just see them through the winter months, but it certainly won't pay the rents on top of it. So I don't agree with giving payment holidays because the government has put lots of things in place. The most recent one obviously was the interest-free, fee-free loan for a year. So you can take a loan over, uh, I think it's six years is a maximum, but pay no payments on that for a year anyway. So that could be something looked at, but these are their businesses for them to run the way they feel best. But from our point of view, I think we need to protect them. And I would recommend the three point two, most of it stays as is. But all I would say is, it is proposed that all businesses are asked to agree a repayment plan by the thirty first of December two thousand and twenty. But not when they are to take, start repaying that. That I think we, we need to have that degree of fluidity. So in their payment plan, they may say, and our first payment will be on the first of April twenty twenty one, or whatever it may be to suit that business. I don't see how we can go hard and fast as this, say, this is a date. Uh, and in twenty one days of opening, you need to start paying that. Because if they open on the seventeenth of January, twenty one days puts them to the end of October and they won't have the money to pay. So that's a recommendation I would make, but I agree with the sentiments of every other councillor who's spoken, that we must protect our coastal businesses, not just for those businesses themselves, but for nine thousand people they employ down the coast as well.
Okay, thank you councillor Kirk. If I could just come on the back of that one quickly, well, you brought it to our attention. Um, if anybody is listening and, and wanting advice on this, the, the loan you're actually on about is the Business Bounce Back Loan. Um, they'll find that link and click there and it does take you into all the right directions and advise you. And there's quite a lot, a lot of banks on form, uh, seven of the top ones, and it gives you advice. Um, so, so that's for that. Um, Town Clerk, would you like to speak on that one? Or councillor Kirk?
The, um, what I would ask is for clarity in terms of, um, putting together that payment plan to understand what council's ultimate end date is. So is that then, if the payment plan is to be agreed by the thirty first of December twenty twenty, is it that the payment plan should be complete by the thirty first of March twenty twenty two, which is the end of the next financial year?
Okay, thank you. And we bring councillor Cunningham in, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I totally agree with all the other councillors and obviously I'm not in business myself. Um, I do agree that businesses will find this hard, but I do think the residents of Skegness do deserve to get this money that they are owed. But we do need to talk to the, the companies, the people that run these kiosks individually, once we're open. I would sooner see this item deferred until after the weekend, until we get some clarity as to when they would be able to open, prior to actually putting anything in place. We need a plan that we're going to put a plan in place for them. But I don't see how we can do it until we know when they're going to be able to generate any income themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, can I just come back on that one?
Of course.
The, the reason it's on the agenda is because further, uh, amounts of falling due, there was a, uh, amounts due at the beginning of April, there are further amounts due at the beginning of June as well. So, um, it is important i- for me to be able to talk to, um, the kiosk owners or kiosk lesses to be able to give them clarity about what council's intention is. And I, I do fully understand that if this is a changing thing on a, a, a week-by-week basis and we don't know exactly how the lockdown is going to end or what, what the process is going to be, or even, even whether certain regions are treated differently from other regions. But I think from a council point of view, there needs to be some clarity for me to be able to have that conversation with the kiosk holders so that, um, I can be clear and they can plan, um, their finances, um, you know, in the next few weeks, not, not six months' time.
Thank you, Town Clerk. What, what I would, what I would like to see, to be fair, because under these, under certain times, or certain times, people are, are worried. Um, I think as a town council, we should, we should be writing a letter to these businesses, explaining that we are aware of Mounts House standing. Um, explaining that the rents, uh, will need to be paid, but we will, we will work with them and write to them within due course, but not to worry about any missed payments at the moment. It's just a little mi- e- easier on the mind for them, uh, when they've got so much to worry about already. So that's what's something I, I, I would say, but I don't know what other councillors' views are. But I, I think that's the way we want to be going and working with these people to, to ease a little bit of pressure in the, uh, the hard times. Councillor Dennis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with you. I just think we are in very difficult times and, oh really, I've got no answer for it. The only thing is that flexibility has got to be the name of the game. Whatever happens is, we've got to talk to people, talk, 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 reach a payment plan. If they give us a bit, if they can give us a bit when they get open, if they could just let me pay a little bit, then I can pay a little bit. And then we can bring it over till the next year. It's a very, very difficult town clerk when you're asking us to make a decision where nobody knows where it's going to go and nobody knows what's occurring. I think, and I think councillors, the Town Clerk needs a bit of a guide to find out where he's going and what he's going to do. But I don't think we're in any sort of position to, 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 to make a decision as, as, as councillor Cunningham said. I, I don't think that, you know, we're in a position to make a decision, but I do think that we need to give all the support we possibly can.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Anderson.
And the, um, and the employees that work for him, and we had a good debate regarding that. But I also am concerned, or I hear what our MP has been saying about double subsidy. Um, there is some, as you said, Mr Mayor, there is some, um, grants out there. There's some business, interest-free business loans, um, out there that businesses can secure against their businesses. Um, because at the end of the day, uh, we're supposed to be guardians of the public purse. Um, there's a lot of people here who are struggling to pay in Skegness that are struggling to pay their council tax. And it's finding that balance of, yes, you might be double subsidising a business, but you're going to hurt the people that actually are going to support those businesses, i.e. the residents of our town. And it's finding that balance, uh, between the rock and the, and the hard place. But I, I support you that we need to have a conversation with these, uh, businesses, the kiosk holders. There's got to be a payment plan put in place. There is money out there that they can actually access, which has been said as, as part of the debate. I don't know if they've applied some, none of us know, uh, if they have applied. That conversation has to be had. At the end of the day, we might be protecting some at the expense of others. And I certainly don't want to go down that route of next year, putting our hand up or our, the Town Clerk coming back with a report saying we need to put X amount in reserves because the auditor has told us it's not viable, the council to carry on with thirty thousand pounds in reserves and having to put, uh, up the council tax of, um, the few that are left in work that, uh, uh, be, will be able to afford to pay it. Or those people who are living off their savings or retirement, who are going to have to pay it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a, just a quick one on that one where you, you said that people are, or whether they have or haven't seeked further advice. We don't know how long this is going to last. Um, and I've been talking to several businesses that contact me and they say they are worried about borrowing money um, on, on keeping their business that they've got going. Uh, but they say, uh, majority of them say, the hundred percent back government loan, which is the bounce back loan, um, the money can be put in the bank, if you don't need it, you can pay it within the year, no interest. So I, I would, as a, as a council, I would urge that we, we send people in this direction because there are some answers for some. Um, but, you know, I, I even got answers. I just, I talk to people and look at ways forward. But the bounce back loan is one to look at. Um, and businesses are saying, I'd secure it, the money if you can, and keep it i- in case you need it. Because we just don't know how long this, this lockdown is going to be, uh, and a way out of it. So, uh, I've got, uh, an iPhone, uh, it says iPhone.
Councillor Ty.
Councillor Ty, uh, please.
Yeah, all I was gonna, all I was gonna say is that asking kiosks to repay their debts in rent, uh, in, in one year is, is absolutely ludicrous. There is, they are never going to be able to afford to pay back within that year. You've got to, you've got to look at about a three-year at least. Thank you.
Fully agree. And we will look at ways of helping them. Um, and hopefully we can go further forward after Sunday. Can I bring councillor Steve Kirk in, please?
Yeah, just a clarification, Mr Mayor. What I was saying was a proposal. I would like to see that we have those conversations that everyone's been talking about, but that we give the Town Clerk a clear steer. So we have the conversations throughout what should be this season to look to have a payment plan in place by the thirty first of March, uh, sorry, thirty first of December this year. And taking on board, uh, what people are saying, that would be to have all debts cleared by a date. And if the date is three years hence, i.e. twenty twenty four, then I'm more than happy with that because that would fit within this council term, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Within this council term, all debts would be clear. That is my recommendation, but on that end date, I'm happy to take the opinion of those who actually run the kiosks to know whether that's realistic. Anything longer than that, I would start worrying about it, carrying over council term. So starting a new council in debt, so to speak, with, with money owed to them, I think would be unfair on a new council. So the recommendation is, once again, that there is a payment plan in place by the end of this calendar year, so the thirty first of December, for repayments over a period to be agreed by this council. But I would suggest it would be by the end of this council term.
Okay, thank you. Can you, can you include that? Would you say that we need to write to these businesses and, and, and state the fact that we know they're behind, but not to worry, we will be in contact very shortly?
It's all part of the commons, yes, I'd agree entirely. We should always be communicating with our, our businesses, saying that, yes, we value their input into the town, uh, the people they employ, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, uh, the pay, the money does need to be repaid.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sid Dennis.
Yeah, I'm quite happy, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm quite happy to second that, to be fair.
Okay, thank you.
I could just say as well, I'm going to have to leave the meeting after this item, okay? Because, uh, I've, I've got, uh, things to do.
Is there, is there, it's, I've just a quick question. I've only got, I must have a page missing if there's more agenda items. Um, must be a page missing out of my pack. Uh, but I'll have a look on the internet while we speak. Can we bring councillor Dan Kirk? Did he want to speak on this?
No, he's done.
We're just going to corroborate what councillor Dennis had seconded. Yeah, I'm happy to proceed to the vote as well, if everybody else is.
Okay, if you're all happy to proceed to the vote, please vote by your hands. Still waiting for councillor Barry Cunningham Burnham. Councillor Burnham, are we voting?
Okay, I think that's everybody.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay. Have we got more agenda items in Town Clerk? Because I seem to have a sheet missing, if that's the case, out of my pack.
We have. Um, the next, um, item on the, uh, agenda is item number sixteen, uh, which is the update on general staffing situation during the lockdown.
Okay, agenda item sixteen then, raising the, uh, raising this issue. Sorry, I, I, I'm a sheet missing, sorry.
Okay. Um, so you can recall, I, I reported where we were, um, some weeks ago. We're in a situation where, um, we've got a mixed bag of what's happening. So we've got some people who are able to work pretty much as they would normally work, without too much in interruption to their work. We've got those, um, that are working full-time, but are probably working quite a bit less efficiently than they would be during normal times. We've got some people who are working fewer hours, uh, than they would normally work. Uh, and they are clear that they have to make those hours up. Uh, and with each of them, there is a, a, a procedure that we would go through to make sure that that occurs. Uh, and we've got, um, we've got some who, who aren't working, um, for, uh, reasons, either because of their personal circumstance, um, which means that they can't work. Um, or, um, the, we can't put in place safe, uh, working practices for them to return to work yet. Now, with the latter ones, those ones, we are actually looking at ways in which we can, um, move staff around so that, that we have got staff, um, the spread of work, spread amongst those staff so that we, we are safe working. And we're putting in measures, for example, in the council van, where we've got a front and back in the council van, we're actually sealing off the front and the back so two people can go in the vehicle, uh, safely and, uh, and social, uh, distance whilst they're working. So overall, I think, uh, you know, we are managing the situation. Um, there will be some, um, unpaid leave that is likely to be taken by some in order to make up the time rather than having to work for long hours. But of course, we will be reviewing this throughout the year, depending on how quickly those individuals who can't currently work their full hours, how quickly they can come back to a, a normal working pattern.
Okay, thank you. Anybody wishing to comment now? Councillor Danny Brooks.
Not me yet, no.
Oh, sorry. Can you lay your hands down?
Sorry, mate, yeah, it was from the vote.
Councillor, uh, just disappearing now. Councillor Emerson.
It's okay, yeah, I just had to shoot off.
Okay, councillor Cunningham.
Just another vote.
Trying the hardest to find a sheet to catch up with you all. Councillor Anderson.
I've, I've just moved the vote, uh, Mr Mayor, and to thank the staff for what, all, for everything that they've done. They've been working immensely hard. I live opposite King George V Walk and they're out there doing work. Sometimes they've forgotten that they are key workers by residents. It's not all NHS, it's, it's public, you know, employees that are out there, uh, facing, you know, this virus head-on as well.
Yeah, fully agree with you on that one. Councillor Carpenter.
Yeah, um, sorry, Mr Mayor, I've come through to you to ask, is it all right to leave the meeting? I, I didn't let you know, I've, I've got Kath in the cancer ward at Lincoln Hospital and she's trying to get hold of me. Um, so are you quorum it if I leave the meeting?
Yes, well, yes, we are. And, uh, do you pass on now? I love to and hope she gets well soon. Uh, we wasn't expecting you because we thought you'd be running late anyway. But we thank you for tuning in with us and being a part of this meeting. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, bye.
Councillor Dan Kirk.
I'm happy, um, councillor Anderson, um, and also include the, um, note of thanks on behalf of the council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we go to the vote. Please show.
We've suddenly got a majority there.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to take your hands off, thank you. Lay your hands. We're moving on to agenda item seventeen. I think I've got the message from Susan Kate that this is about. I think I've got the message from Susan Kate that this is about consideration of planning.
Do you want me to read out the agenda items?
Yeah, please, I've got a sheet missing, unless, if Kate's listening, she could just email me a copy over, I've got me other gadget here to pick up on that.
I think she's going to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So the first agenda item under planning is 4.1 McDonald's Restaurant, which is planning permission and consent to display four internally illuminated, free-standing digital signs and a digital booth screen. What I'm going to do is I can share, I should be able to share this now online, which is going to be interesting because it's something that we, let me just get this one up. So this is, this is the internal booth. Just got to move my thing out of the way. Right. This is the McDonald's signs. And this one shows the location of that, of those signs.
Okay, councillor Ty.
Hold on. I think councillor Ty, you were muted, because I can only see two, two or three councillors while I'm doing the, displaying the plan, so I had to go down the list, but you should for now be unmuted.
No, he's still muted, I think he'll be through iPhone.
Try again.
Well, we'll do that. Councillor Dan Kirk is there with, oh, councillor Ty's back in, he's in the room. Councillor Ty.
Yes, I propose that we move 4.1. It's fairly straightforward, it's internal and external pricing boards. I propose we move it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk.
Thank you. To corroborate that, I think we should approve, sorry, not approve, we're not, I think we should recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Claxton.
This is the second I'll meet to.
Sorry.
Tony Ty's approval, it's internal, it's not going to make a difference to anybody. And if it's better in the restaurant, it's a well-used restaurant in the, in the town.
Okay, raise your hands then, if you want to go with this one. Thank you, go to the vote.
I think we've got a row, you say, that's the majority.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. If you'd like to remove your hands and raise your hands, put your hands down, please. Moving on to 4.2, is it? Do you want me to read these out, Town Clerk?
If you could, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah, I've got the sheet, it's just the main agenda item numbers, I was, I'm one sheet missing, but I've got them. Okay, 4.2, planning permission on 25 Kennedy Avenue. You can see the 4.2 there.
So we've got 4.2, that's the plan, that's the external view. That's the location plan. There was a comment from a neighbour, but the comment related to the safety of the build, and there were concerns over whether the walls were strong enough and things like that, which is not a planning matter. So although there was that comment, it wasn't related to planning matters.
Okay, councillor Dan Kirk.
Yeah, I was just gonna corroborate what Mr Larno just said, that the member of the public, it's, it's down to the building control team, the inspectors to judge that, not ourselves. I believe the development is in keeping with similar extensions within the area, so I would happy to support and propose that we support this application.
Okay, thank you. Councillor, any other councillors? Councillor Edington.
Agree with, concur with councillor Kirk, I would second that proposal.
Okay, then we've got a proposal to second that, and I think councillor Ty was just coming to do that. All go to the vote. Once again, I think we've got the majority there, Town Clerk.
Yes, 10, right, 10 raised hands there, so.
Okay, lower your hands for this one, please. Moving on to 4.3, Ms Emma Walker, planning permission extension to existing children's nursery.
So this is the location plan, and these are the designs for the building. And comparing those with the existing layout, this is the existing layout of that building compared with the proposed. There is one objection from a neighbour. The concerns raised are to do with traffic, the loss of view, which obviously is not a planning consideration, and children making noise. So that those were the three issues that were raised by the object.
Okay, councillor Emerson.
Sorry, I need to find councillor Anderson in order to.
Emerson, sorry, Emerson.
Emerson.
Councillor Stephen Emerson.
Yeah, looking, just looking at these plans. Is the height of the building restricted in any way for viewing from anybody at all? Because it seems to be quite high, the extension that's going on.
As I mentioned, the, there is a complaint, complaint or objection raised because of loss of view, but loss of view in itself isn't a planning consideration. If it was a loss of light or overlooking, then that may be taken into consideration, but just the loss of view isn't.
Yeah, okay, and I'm second. Many years ago, my daughter used to go to this nursery, it's a very well-honed place, very clean, and they do wonderful work there. The only issue that may be a concern, Oto Rose, that's already said already, is the amount of traffic that will be going in and out that small entrance, though at the front. Other than that, if there's no other objections, I propose we move this off.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk.
Thank you. Yeah, I have significant concerns with regards to vehicular access onto Lincoln Road. Already, there's significant issues with people ingressing onto the property, there's not a easy way for vehicles to turn around and then leave forward-facing back onto the highway. Grass verges get churned up massively, your groundskeeping team, I'm sure, will corroborate that. It's a tough one, it's a really difficult one. There are significant issues in that respect, but equally, we need to have available quality childcare provision, which if there's demand is there, then they wouldn't be putting forward this sort of application. It's a tough, I think they need to do some more work with regards to vehicle ingress. If they had some sort of turn system in place, you know, a one-way vehicle in and out, I think that could alleviate some of the residents' concerns. Is it an appropriate location for such a large childcare establishment? Perhaps not, but that's not really our concern, that's their concern. But I have reservations, significant reservations with regards to vehicles, and I can't see how the developer has mitigated this. So I'd look forward to the highways' response.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Tony Ty.
The amount of traffic on that area, I'd like to see what the highways have got to say about that.
Okay, we've got anybody else willing to speak on that? Cool. Councillor Dan Kirk, did you want to speak again?
Yeah, I would, if I may. The whole point of this activity is us as local councillors to input our opinions, being local representatives of our wards. We know this area because we live and work in this area, and traffic during this time is significantly poor, is the right phrase. Had they had, you know, have staggered times in which children go in and leave, then I think this would be less of an issue, but I can't see how they're mitigating this traffic concern. So for that reason, I'd like to propose that we are not in support of this based on that grounds until we can see evidence of how they're going to do that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Emerson.
No, I've got nothing else to add to that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Steve Kirk.
This is, this extension is meant to accommodate, because if we're talking only a minor number, but increased provision for those that are already there, the traffic isn't really an issue, but often if they're looking to treble or quadruple the number of places they have there, so possibly the number of vehicles as well, then it does become an issue.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to comment? Councillor Dan Kirk.
Thank you. Just by the sheer fact that they're wanting to have two extra classrooms and a snug, it's unlikely that a childcare provision would want significantly more space if they weren't wanting to have a larger intake of children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Claxton.
Can we wait and hear what the highways have got to say about this before we say no? Because, again, it's broadening childcare facilities in the town, and it's a good childcare facility.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah, Town Clerk, thank you.
The issue is that this is council's opportunity to give your view. If you're concerned about traffic, then raise those concerns and decide one way or the other based on that. If highways have an issue with traffic, they will raise it, they are the highways' authority and will be responsible for, you know, ensuring that the proper process is gone through.
Okay, if I could just come back on that.
Quickly.
Then I couldn't support, I can't, if it's down to the traffic, if they're expanding with two more classrooms, the traffic's going to be horrendous there anyway, with the grammar score coming out of there as well. The traffic's going to be ludicrous on that junction alone.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Barry.
Just a minute, councillor Barry, I'm trying to find you, and it's quite difficult to navigate this with the plans up at the same time. Okay, councillor Barry, you're now unmuted.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I understood though, when, to get access to this property, or for the children, there was a driveway where they actually drove in off the road and dispatched the children in their vicinity, and then they more or less returned off the road. So I couldn't see why there is a problem with the traffic flow.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Ty.
Yes, the problem, the problem with this is that we lost the secret garden nursery, and I think some of those children have gone down there, and that's why they need extra space. Peter's comment there, they, there's a little side siding down the side of the building where they back, they're back to the wall, and then they can drive out, so they don't have to back out of it. But I still think there's a huge problem with traffic in that area.
Thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk.
Thank you. Just to remind, I believe, I can't remember who it was, sorry, that we are purely acting as a consultancy, you know, we're not making the decision, so there's no point us waiting for another party to offer their consultancy opinion. I did propose that we object on the basis of inappropriate or inadequate vehicular access. If anybody was happy to second that, I think, I think the general flavour of the debate so far is that we're quite ready for a vote.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Steve Kirk.
Mr Mayor, yeah, I just, great respect to what the Town Clerk said, I'd just be careful of anything highways have to say. The other day, is it not highways, given as the situation we have on Grand Parade? We are the experts on traffic in Skegness, not Lincolnshire County Council highways. When those buses pull in to drop off and pick up for the schools, it is chaos down there. To have then a load more cars pulling in as well, and adding to that, I think is unacceptable, and a risk to not only our drivers, but the children that are walking in that area to get their bus or being dropped off from their bus. So I would second an objection.
Okay, thank you. Right, so we've, we've got it, we've got it proposed and seconded, so we'll go to the vote. If you can vote for me, please, using your hand signal on the screen. Councillor Barry, councillor Emerson, are you waiting for your vote, or are you against this?
10 raised hands, I think that's the majority anyway.
Okay, okay, moving on to the next one, 4.4. Mr and Mrs Elliot, it's Landoff Layby Borough Road, Willow Park.
The Environment Agency has raised a strong objection against this one because of the low lying nature of the land, and that was there to be a breach of any of the banks, then that would put very quickly the people in this area, certainly during the risk, the high-risk time of winter, which they're referring to, it would put them in danger. So they have raised a strong objection against it, but clearly that's a matter for the Environment Agency to put that forward.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Burnham.
No, I'm okay, thank you, I left my hand up.
Okay, councillor Claxton.
Sorry, left my hand up too.
Councillor Emerson.
Yeah, one thing about this, I can understand the environment's issue with this, and I totally agree with what they've said. I would also propose in this situation to put these plans out there.
Could councillor, could councillor Burnham, please mute his microphone? Please, just if anybody's got their microphones on, if you can just mute them. Councillor Emerson, can you unmute? Councillor Emerson, sorry, nobody heard a word of that.
Okay, sorry, yeah, yeah, I was going on what the clerks just said with the Environment Agency on this one. I totally agree with the Environment Agency, I think it would be an issue. I think it would be an issue, especially in wintertime, so I think we should oppose this application.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk.
Thank you. I happily second councillor Emerson's proposal there. I think 40 additional car runs, that's a large volume of potential... Well, there shouldn't be residents, but who knows? And therefore, in the event of a flooding emergency, that's an additional strain on our local public services as well. So yeah, with that in mind, I'd second councillor Emerson's proposal to object to this.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to the vote then.
So it's eight raised hands.
Councillor Stanley Brooks, or councillor Kirk wanting to vote?
I don't think it's councillor Kirk on planning. I think that's why they've turned the camera off.
All right, okay.
Same with councillor Finley.
Okay.
None of us are on planning.
Councillor Brooks has come on that. Anyway, so we've got the results in there, have we, Town Clerk?
We have, yes.
Okay, I think that's, I was only just missing that one sheet with item agenda 16 and 17 on it, so we've done very well. We have come to the end of our meeting. I want to thank you all for your patience. We must just put out there before we do go, I want to thank you for your support and bearing with us in these difficult times. We will go forward. Remember to tell people that Skegness is shut for this weekend. Take the advice of the government, stay at home, protect everybody and yourselves, and we can come out this a little bit greener hopefully on the other side. But I'll just say goodbye and have a good weekend, and I thank everybody for their support, and I'll serve you for another 12 months as I have done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, Keith.